Okay, call this Village Green Hills Council meeting to order for June 27, 2023. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Coulter?
Here.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Hudson?
Here.
Ms. Osmanoglu?
Here.
Ms. Walter?
Here.
Mayor Moore? Here. Here we have a prayer by Maria Walter.
Oh God, we remember the courage and determination of our founding fathers, and we remember the brave and patriotic men and women who gave so much for us. We thank them that we are a free nation and a free people, and it is through them that we carry forward the ideals of justice, freedom, and democracy. We pray for our elected officials, for sound government and just laws. Lord, make us ever proud to be Americans, and we ask that you would rekindle the flame of compassion within us so that we might show real care for our fellow men. Teach us to be sensitive to the needs of others. Grant that as Americans, we may continue to help our veterans and those in need. Be with us, guide us, we pray. Amen.
Okay, we have the minutes of previous meetings, the council meeting on May 23, and the council work session of June 13. If there are no corrections, minutes shall stand as approved. Public presentation by Jennifer Weichert from the library.
Hello, thanks for letting me come again and share all the fun stuff we've got going on. Discover Summer is well underway, and if you haven't been in to spin the Wonder Wheel yet, I highly recommend it. We have a little carnival wheel, and there's all kinds of little prompts and ways to engage the kids when they come in, and they can do that once every day. So if they come in, there's little prizes that they can pick out from, if they tell me a joke, or if they give me a really good pose, or if they play in the scavenger hunt. If you haven't signed up yet for Discover Summer, it is not too late. It runs all the way until July 31, and kids get a free book when they sign up, and they get to set goals, and those goals are whatever they want it to be. So it could be read for 20 minutes a day for a week, it could be attend a program, it could be learn something about cats, whatever you're into, we can help you with that, and you get to pick your interests. And if you're reading to your little one, even if they're not old enough to be reading themselves, they are welcome to participate in the summer reading club as well. If you complete your goals and tell us about it, we'll give you entries for the grand prize drawings, there's completion prizes for kids and teens, lots of fun stuff. I also have an entire calendar full of fun events. Another feature is the Witten Woods Lunch Bus has been stopping at the community building on Tuesdays and Fridays, and we've been working out there to provide some activities and stuff for the kids while they're waiting for lunch and everything. So that will be on Tuesdays, weather permitting, until the end of July as well. We will be closed on the 4th of July, a shocker to everyone, I'm sure. Just wanted to be sure everyone knows that. For kids coming up, we have Invitation to the Blues, which is kind of a history of the Blues, and there will be some performance as well with that, so anybody who wants to stop by and learn a little bit more is more than welcome. That is going to be on Thursday, July 6, at 2:00 p.m. Kids can also come to Animals Alive on Wednesday, July 19, at 11:00 a.m. The parks will be bringing live animals, we do not know what they are, they're always a surprise for us, always a lot of fun as well. We're offering tech hours again, July 18, from 4 to 6:00 p.m. So if adults need help with our streaming service, or you want to know what this Libby thing is all about, or you want to do some more in-depth genealogical research or something, we can highlight a lot of different resources the library has. If that doesn't work for you, step into the library anyway, we will work with you on demand, or we can set up an appointment if you give us a little bit of heads up. We're also, for adults, going to have Ohio Astronauts with Gary Crouch from Creative Aging on Monday, July 24, at 6:30 p.m. for adults. So if you're into the history of John Lennon, Neil Armstrong, and all the others, come learn a little bit more. For teens, we're going to have an after-hours switch party. So we're going to take over the whole library, they can be as loud as they want, we'll have pizza, they can play games, and it starts at 6:30 on a Friday, July 21. So usually we close at 6:00. We will be open for that party only for the teens on that day. We're also having a stress-free school year program on July 25 at 2:00 p.m., and start the year off right with some study tips. Some high school students are going to come and share their experiences with transitioning to high school. So that's for incoming 7th and 8th graders up into 9th grade. There is registration for that, so if anybody wants to go to those, too, make sure you stop on our website. And we are having an adult story time for adults with special needs and their caregivers, and that's on Mondays at 11:30 a.m. It's an hour after our normal family story time. So that's been very popular lately, so if anybody knows anybody who'd like to come to that, it's a lot of fun. 20 prints are still free every day, faxing, scanning email, and we also do voter registration. And since we have a special election coming up on August 8, I just wanted to point out that the last day to register to vote is July 10, and we can help you with that at the library, we can print out the form, we can send it down for you. So if you've had a birthday lately or anything else, and you need to get started, we can help with that. We can also do mail-in ballot requests, and those will start being mailed out on July 11. And we also have info, if you need to check, am I registered, where's my polling place, stop at any library location in our regular hours, and we can help you with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
If I could.
Go ahead.
We really like the book tag that gives the book clubs on it, the movie. If you could just touch base on that.
Oh yes, we offer four book clubs and a classic movie club as well. So we have a group for reading for just about anything. Our nonfiction book club meets on the first Thursday at 3:00 p.m. We have a fiction book club that meets on the second Tuesday at 6:30 p.m. A mystery book club that meets on the third Monday at 6:30 p.m. And a romance readers one that meets on the second Saturday at 11:00 a.m.
You're like a lifeguard or something.
And then the classic movie club is on the second Saturday, I don't know.
We'll give you one.
One of the Saturdays is also classic movie club, but we have them at the same time at 11:00. So check out online for, or give us a call, we'll be happy to confirm whatever it is.
May I ask you a question? I usually donate books down at the Friends of the Library bookstore, but if I only have a few, is it okay to drop it off? Because I read that the branches are taking donations too, or is that not a good idea?
No, absolutely. We do take them, as we're quite small, we don't have a special barrel for them, like most of the other locations do, but especially if you've got a small stack, please drop them off at any point. We will send them down to the Friends. If you go to Forest Park or Central, they will probably have a bin in their hallway, and if not, ask them where it is, and they will help you with that. So thank you for anybody thinking about us for donations of used books or anything, we always appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, reports from municipal officials, municipal manager Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to mention the two legislative items that we have tonight. The first is the resolution accepting our tax budget for 2024, it's hard to believe. At our work session, Deb has given a full presentation of the tax budget, so it is now attached for your approval. And the other item, I had also distributed a summary of the update to the solid waste management plan for the county, and if you don't have any questions, this resolution, if passed, will then officially adopt that for us, which they want us to do, each of the communities that are part of the district. That completes that. I have another, other items, nonlegislative items that I want to talk about. One is the pool. That's been a big topic for us for a couple months now, and I'm pleased to report that the pool environment is much improved with the changes that have been made, so that is very good. Also, at the pool, you will notice, I think it was today, that the Gators actually volunteered and cleaned up the garden located right outside the pool entrance. It looks great, so a big thanks to them for doing that. And I also want to mention, if you haven't seen it already, you will, the Gators are going to have a fundraiser at Skyline, so anything to do with Skyline always catches my eye. Anyway, that's July 15. I got this off their website, so you can see me, or get with them, or on their website. $10, 10% of every check will be donated to the Green Hills Gators, and that's the Phineet Town Skyline Chili in July. Big thanks to them for what they did. Okay, I wanted to draw your attention to the fact that our next council meeting will be at Malloy's, and that is because we're expecting a public hearing there. We want to be sure if individuals feel they want to say something about the proposed local district, that there's enough room, and certainly we can accommodate more people there than we can here. So remember, and we'll send out notices.
That's the work session, or the?
It's the council meeting.
The council meeting, okay.
Yes, that night. And work in the road on DuWitt starts probably tomorrow morning. That's on a water line. It should be a relatively quick project, as in maybe just a couple of days, but those are old water lines up there, so it really just depends on what conditions they find when they get down into them. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
I already got my letter for the meeting.
Great.
So they've already gone out.
Yes, they have.
Okay, the law director is not able to be here this evening. Clerk of council, Teresa Lawley.
Anything to report?
Chief of police, Neil Ferderman.
Thank you, Mayor. We had two recent events that were a lot of fun. We had our open house here last month, and then we recently did Game Time with GPD. That was on the 10th of this month, and we had a good turnout for both of those events. They were a lot of fun for us and for the community, so we thank those who attended. We had our Kalia 2023 review that was completed within the last month. There's a pretty lengthy report on all of that that I sent to all of you, and some of that is on our website, but I did want to highlight the summary assessment by the lead assessor, and he wrote, "The agency is a smaller department providing services to a 1.25 square mile community of 4,000 residents. The agency offers a high degree of professional services for which its policies provide clear and succinct guidance and allows for sufficient officer discretion when appropriate. The agency employs best practices throughout its services and incorporates them into its policies at every opportunity. Ongoing analysis of training and practices allow it to address any developing trends. Overall, the agency meets or exceeds the commission's standards in its practices and policies that are subject to constant review and update, with any changes being immediately posted and training provided. The agency's emphasis on community policing is visible in its personnel. While other agencies might be limited with only a 12-member sworn staff, these highly professional staff members constantly seek improvement opportunities through their individual and collective analysis of issues and concerns." We're very pleased to get that feedback, and all of the credit is due to Lieutenant Ann Ward, who serves as our accreditation manager, and she did an absolutely great job with pulling this all together, so we're pleased to remain accredited for yet another year. We do have in our monthly newsletter, which you can find online, tips for identifying email fraud, Bitcoin scams, and solicitors selling utility options, so there's a whole lot of information in our newsletter, and we hope you take a look at it. Upcoming soon, particularly pet owners and those maybe former service members, will take note of Ohio's new fireworks law, which allows a lot more fireworks than what we're used to, or what we would like to see, but that's what the Ohio Legislature has passed. So from 4:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. on July 3, 4th, and 5th, fireworks are legal, they have to be residential and not commercial grade. We would probably have to consult with the fire chief to determine what that was, but we do discourage people from handling those, particularly those that might have taken some holiday spirits. We've seen some pretty bad injuries, and we hope those don't occur again. The other things that I wanted to stress was that we had some good news in the past month. On June 1, Officer Mayberry reported he was out with a Green Hills resident in the A section with three children. He noticed that the daughter had flat tires on her bicycle, and mom stated they could not find a pump. He knew a resident in town that had a bicycle pump, and he borrowed it. He went back to the original residence and aired up the tires, and then he went with the kids to Palma Park and watched the family and a few other neighborhood kids play. And then the other bit of good news was our newest officer, Dan Warman, on June 16, was dispatched to Andover Road for a report of a vehicle leaving the scene of an accident. The vehicle stated her vehicle was parked on Andover near Burley when her vehicle struck. A neighbor observed the accident and gave a description of the striking vehicle as a white SUV with heavy front-end damage. A Hamilton County park ranger located a vehicle after Officer Warman put out a "Be on the lookout," or BOLO, matching that description, in the basketball courts in Witten Woods. Officer Warman was able to collect several of the car parts left at the scene from the striking vehicle. He responded to Witten Woods, where the vehicle was located. The driver of the vehicle first denied striking the vehicle on Andover, stating that her crash had occurred in another location. Officer Warman was able to take the parts that he collected at a crash scene and match them exactly to the driver's car. And I recall, Council member Lee, that you did exactly that a few years back. Good detective work. When the driver was confronted with the evidence, she admitted to hitting the car, and the driver was charged with failure to control and leaving the scene of an accident. It was good work by our newest officer. I'd like to remind you that we have a couple events that are still coming up. Our next Talk in the Park, not to be confused with Park Talks, but Talk in the Park, will be on Thursday, July 20, at 6:00 p.m. And then we will be cooking with the cops, and we hope our regular guest cookers are present. That will be on Tuesday, August 1, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We'll have hamburgers, hot dogs, and flavored shaved ice. During the past month, we made 17 criminal arrests, including charges for trafficking in drugs, having weapons under disability, failure to appear, operating a vehicle under the influence, operating without reasonable control, leaving the scene, and drug paraphernalia. We responded to 193 incidents, including 34 squad runs, 10 suspicious persons, 10 lockouts, nine domestics, eight noise complaints, eight juvenile complaints, seven warrants served, seven intrusion alarms, six parking complaints, and six checks on the well-being. We provide mutual aid in 13 instances, we issued 48 traffic citations, 62 warnings, and we investigated five traffic crashes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments, Chief? All right, and good, good work on getting this Kalia renewed for another year. All right, I have the mayor's court for the month of May. Ending bank balance, $28,627.42. Checks to be issued to the state of Ohio, $2,361.30. Hamilton County, $75. And the Village of Green Hills, $7,806.80. That's all I have. Reports of committees in intergovernmental affairs, laws and rules, Maria Walter.
I called the village manager and asked if we had any meetings or any reasons to get together, and she said absolutely there was nothing on the agenda for it, the lack of agenda.
Okay. All right, services and streets, Jennifer Osmanoglu.
I have nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Safety, Melanie Hermes.
Nothing to report at this time.
All right. Recreation, cable television, Rachel Hudson.
Nothing to report, other than upcoming meeting on Thursday.
Okay. Community development, Jeff Holder.
Similar, we have a community development meeting this Thursday as well. The rec meeting will be at 6:00, and the community development meeting will be at 6:30.
Okay. Finance and audit, Jack Lee. Now, I know you had some.
Of course, of course. We have council at your place tonight as a general fund recap for the month of May. I always thank our finance director for putting this together. As you can see, we're showing positive results in both the income tax and real estate. Overall, the general fund balance continues to grow at a healthy clip. The general fund, as of the end of May, stands at a total of $2,146,104.81. On the expense side, there were no transfers made from the general fund for operations or other accounts. Expenditures are well within appropriate range, and again, there's no transfers to the general fund. Unless you have any questions, that's the end of Maria's report.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, this is an opportunity for residents and nonresidents to make comments solely regarding legislation that's on the current agenda. Nonresidents must obtain prior permission. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and state your comments. Comments will be limited to four minutes.
I think we lost him for the name, but no, they got Chris, really?
Oh, I thought that was, we didn't know.
It's a speaker.
Can I pass these up?
This is regarding the resolution, the tax budget, or the solid waste district?
No, there's no, there are two comments.
There's two, okay.
That's okay.
Okay.
You'll get another chance.
Okay, we have no unfinished business. New business, Resolution Number 2023-R10-F, Resolution Accepting Green Hills 2024 Tax Budget, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. Yeah, glad to read this resolution in short order. Resolution 2023-R10-F, Resolution Accepting the Green Hills 2024 Tax Budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Council for the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, that the Council of the Village of Green Hills accepts the 2024 tax budget as prepared by the municipal manager and the finance director attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Osmanoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
And Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Resolution Number 2023-R10-F, Accepting the Green Hills 2024 Tax Budget Passes. Next one is, oops, there it is. Resolution Number 2023-R011-SNS, Resolution Approving the Update of the Solid Waste Management Plan of the Hamilton County Solid Waste Management District. And Ms. Osmanoglu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 2023-R011-SNS, Resolution Approving the Update of the Solid Waste Management Plan of the Hamilton County Solid Waste Management District. Whereas pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 3734, Ohio Revised Code, the Act, the Hamilton County Solid Waste Policy Committee, the Policy Committee, has adopted an update of the Hamilton County Solid Waste Plan, otherwise known as the Plan Update, for the Hamilton County Solid Waste Management District, known as the Solid Waste District. And whereas pursuant to the Act, the Board of County Commissioners and the legislative authority of each municipal corporation or township within the Solid Waste District must approve or disapprove the Plan Update by ordinance or resolution. And whereas the Village of Green Hills has reviewed the Plan Update and has determined that the Plan Update is in the best interest of the Village of Green Hills and Hamilton County. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio. Section 1, Approval of the Plan Update. The Council and Board hereby approves the Hamilton County Solid Waste Plan Update. Section 2, Compliance with Open Meetings Law. It is hereby certified that all formal actions of the Board or Council of Village of Green Hills relating to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Council or Board of Village of Green Hills, and that all deliberations of the Council or Board of Village of Green Hills were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22, Ohio Revised Code. Section 3, Emergency. This resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health and welfare of the Village of Green Hills. The reason for the emergency being the need to comply with statutory provisions and to proceed with solid waste management policies without delay in order to properly serve the Village of Green Hills. Section 4, Forwarding of Resolution. The clerk is hereby directed to promptly deliver, or cause to be delivered, a copy of this resolution to the Hamilton County Solid Waste Management District. Section 5, that this resolution is and shall be effective from and after the date of its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Do you have a second?
Second. Sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? This will be good until 2038.
That seems so far away.
Will you still be here then?
I don't think so.
All right, clerk call the council.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Osmanoglu?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number 2023-R011-SNS passes, approving the update of the Solid Waste Management Plan of Hamilton County. All right, next item, council comments. Do we have anything we want to add? All right, the municipal calendar.
The executive session, add that? Oh, nevermind.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, calendar. We have.
Community development at 6:30.
On Thursday.
Thursday.
And we're at 6:00 on Thursday.
All right, nothing else. Opportunity for residents and nonresidents to appear before council. Nonresidents must obtain prior permission. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and state your comments or questions. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers.
Yep, I believe Councilman Maria Walter was correct. Didn't we at one point just say you had to say if you were a Green Hills resident or nonresident?
But not the address. We don't know. I don't know what that question is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just say if you're a resident.
Just say if you're a resident.
Resident.
That's it.
In your name. Jennifer Bachman Street.
Okay.
There's a problem with the family on Bachman Street. It behaved disruptively without care for the well-being of their neighbors. The police have been called numerous times in three years for noise violations and disorderly conduct. They have essentially been ineffective, never once issuing a citation, but the chief has agreed to issue a citation should this occur again. So I, last night, now, on the best of perfect nights... last night, now, on the best of perfect nights, most of us might have a problem falling asleep. If every, all the conditions are perfect, we still might have a problem falling asleep. Well, the conditions in my home are never perfect because of my neighbors. Last night, they had some kind of an amplifier in their home. It sounded like a karaoke machine or something and they were just, they were just talking, kind of like this. But I could hear every word they were saying from my bedroom and they are in their home. And after an hour, I called the police. I said, can you go over there and shut them up? And Officer Young came up. He arrived at 1:25 approximately in the morning. Got out of his car and I'm watching. And he stood there for 10 seconds. And he gets, going to get back in his car. And I yelled out my window. I said, are you not going to go over there and tell him to be quiet? He said, they are in their home and there is nothing I can do about it. So I have to lay in bed and listen to them, which I have taped. If I can get this going. This is not going to be loud. This was, they were just talking. But if you can imagine laying in your bed and hearing them chatter till 2:00 or later in the morning, so. If that was in the daytime, it wouldn't be an issue. But I'm hearing this chattering going on for hours. And they refuse to do anything about it. Once again, okay, so the police in Green Hills respond excellent. They always respond. But when you respond and you do nothing about it, it's just going to be repeated. So I believe that they are protecting their rights and letting the, letting them trample on everybody else's rights. The police have clearly stated to these people, they can make as much noise as they like up until 10 o'clock at night. Okay?
Okay.
I have one more recording, just a minute. Two more recordings. This is at 5:00. I got to hear it.
Your time's about up.
My phone is. So this is okay?
Okay.
This is from my home. Tonight.
Thank you.
Tonight they taunted me. When I was walking in front of their house, the parent encouraged it and they played a loud song and started singing. And it was a personal time to me. And I want to know, am I supposed to have to tolerate this? Or is there something that can be done about it?
Okay, thank you.
And these are neighbors of mine that want to speak.
Okay.
We can, or we're across the street.
Yeah, and it's, it's not just during the day, it's until 1:30, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, almost every night. It's not just like weekend parties, it's like weekdays, you know? People have to get up 5:00 in the morning to work, so.
Can I speak, Mr. Mayor? We've addressed this consistently, I've talked with Ms. Nassar, we've been over there. Coincidentally, I talked with Officer Young as he was going on duty this afternoon. He mentioned this call to me, I didn't know Ms. Nassar would be here to speak. But what he told me he heard was pretty much what you heard on the recording. It was a normal conversational level inside a person's home. Unfortunately, the homes are in close proximity to each other. But there's not enough to cite them on a noise ordinance for talking within their own home. We could run it by our law director, but I'm pretty sure there isn't. As to the loud noise that you mentioned and you two have mentioned, if it's at 1:30 in the moment, for heaven's sakes, call us. I think Ms. Nassar knows, we've had officers park a distance and come up on foot so that they're not detected, so that they can hear this and issue a citation. We want to resolve this just as much as you do. So if you hear loud and annoying noises, please call us. We'll do that again, we'll sneak up and we'll try and get them. Normal conversation inside the home, that's going to be a tough one in free country. I wasn't there, but Officer Young told me it was normal conversation and that's why he didn't act.
If I can say something. I understand your frustration and we do want to hear about that and also do whatever we can that's legally in bounds. I know with our neighbor, she likes to leave the TV on all night. And she has her window open, which causes us not to have our window open. We defer to that because it, you know, it's just, it's bothersome to us. I don't know if it's even at the same playing level as what you're dealing with. It's a back and forth. Would we prefer to have our window open sometimes? Of course. She feels lonely and wants to have the TV on, so we're deferring to her in that situation. But I'm sure that the chief will look into it. And if there's a violation, we expect them to ticket people. And they know that. I mean, they'll, I believe they'll do it if we have the legal backing to do it. So we'll look into it, thank you.
So after 10:00, that's the cutoff, that's when you have to be quiet?
That's when the noise ordinance goes into effect, that there will, shall be no unreasonable noise.
Okay, so they can be.
I believe it picks up again at maybe 6:00 in the morning, I'm not sure about that.
What constitutes for unreasonable?
That's a good question.
Did you hear the music that I was playing? That was at 5:00 in the afternoon when I was cooking dinner. And it was blasting. This is just a tape recorder from my phone in my kitchen. It goes well on past 10:00.
But if you call after 10:00, let us know and we'll try and take that action.
And it's not just music, like they're screaming, like, you know, outside, not just outside, they're in their porch area, but they're, you know, loud, very, very loud.
I have a similar situation with Mr. Holter. My neighbors play loud music on their patio. I have a patio that's separated by a privacy fence. There are times I just choose to go back inside. I don't think they're violating any law by listening to their music on their patio, but, I mean, you know, it's 6:00 at night or 7:00. Is it annoying? I share what Mr. Holter said, heck yeah. But I don't think it's a violation of the law. We will confer with our law director and see what we can do to help you. We don't want, you know, to be having you dissatisfied. But we also have laws that we have to follow, so it has to be at that level.
I could add one other thing. A situation like this gets to be really difficult to measure. I don't know, I was surprised, I forget where I was and my watch said, oh, it was a wedding. They said, hey, and my watch says, be warned that if you're in this environment for 30 more minutes, you could be harming your hearing. I don't think it's tied to an actual decibel level, but that takes the subjectivity out of it. You know, it's hard to say, well, am I speaking loud enough or not? But if we, if there was a way to practically measure it, it seems like it would make more sense.
Or is it a separate unit?
Does that make sense to what?
Is there a way to measure it?
Oh, there's always a way to measure it, the question is whether there's a legal backing. To me, that would make more sense where, hey, if you start going above a certain dB level, you would know it's a violation. But I don't know if they would ever do that, so.
All right.
I just had a question for the chief, may I? And what is the curfew time for teenagers?
Well, as a matter of fact, I should have mentioned that because that is in our current monthly report. Our ordinance reads as follows, no minor under the age of 18 shall loiter, idle, wander, stroll, play, or ride any motor vehicle in the public streets or unsupervised places between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m.
Okay, and if you see a youngster, then while you're making the rounds, is it something that you would do to stop them and tell them that they are violating curfew?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We've told our officers to ensure that they enforce that and in our newsletter, we told parents to make sure they know where their kids are.
Sorry, I had, I had a couple of questions.
No, that's okay, okay. I just didn't want you to forget about me.
No.
Monique Mason-Halter, Green Hills resident. I'm here tonight to ask council members again to write a letter to our Ohio legislators and request that they each write a letter to the Federal Communications Commission. Last month, I made the same request and provided you all with copies of the letters sent to the FCC by Ohio State Representative Adam Matthews and Ohio State Senator Steve Wilson at the request of their constituents. I also read aloud what they wrote in their letters to the FCC. Nonprofit group Environmental Health Trust has provided content to include with writing lawmakers. I will read some of it to you now. If you'd like, I can also send you the content to help you write a request. The FCC's human exposure limits for radio frequency have not been updated since 1996 and the agency has yet to act regarding the mandate in the judgment by the U.S. Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit and Environmental Health Trust et al. versus the FCC on August 13, 2021. It is critical that there be up-to-date examination of its wireless radio frequency radiation regulations. The FCC Docket 13-84, reassessment of FCC radio frequency exposure limits and policies, should be refreshed to ensure all the latest science is included. A 2020 GAAP report on wireless technology noted that federal agencies have only reviewed a subset of the relevant research. In addition to cancer, numerous studies link exposure to effects such as impacts to memory, brain development, reproduction, headaches, sleep, and other neurological effects, and these issues need to be thoroughly evaluated. The FCC must ensure relevant U.S. health and environmental agencies have properly systematically reviewed the science that relates to their respective expertise, perform hazard risk analysis, and offer science-based policy recommendations to ensure the public and our children's future is protected. The current expansion of wireless technologies, which is now forecast to include nearly a million cell towers, including many lining the streets of residential neighborhoods, underlines the urgency of the FCC soliciting the thorough review by U.S. expert agencies. Our legislators and agencies must act to make sure that the future of our health and our children's health is protected. Relevant agencies include the EPA, the U.S. National Toxicology Program, National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, the National Academy of Sciences, and various institutes at the NIH, National Institute of Health, including the National Institutes of Environmental Health Science and Children, Child Health and Human Development. Federal developed, health-based safety limits should be developed to ensure the public is protected. I personally also urge you to request that our legislators introduce legislation to adequately address health and environmental issues associated with wireless radio frequency radiation. Again, I'd be happy to send you a template of all of that official sounding verbiage. In addition to asking you to write to our legislators for that letter to the FCC, I'm asking again that you strengthen the Green Hills Small Cell Facilities Ordinance. Other Ohio municipalities have passed more protective ordinances. Our ordinance does not fully protect us from the irresponsible placement of wireless facilities, both 4G and 5G, and the installation of unneeded and unwanted infrastructure. Fellow Green Hills resident Vince Wellidge and I have provided a great deal of information to you at meetings and by email on how you could do this. I'm asking again to meet with any or all of you so we could actually have a discussion about this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm just going to put a splash in on mic, two words. Barb Taylor, resident. This is in regards to the Green Hills pool usage and rules. I must say, I did appreciate the updated rules, including dress codes and enforcement of these dress codes and the fact that a person has to be 16 or older to be at the pool and prove this if they can be there by themselves. I'm upset, though, by the members-only after 5:00 p.m. weekdays and holidays rule. I have lived in the village for over 40 years and I have been a member, me and my family have been members of the pool for many of these years. This summer, however, due to non-swim restrictions for eight-plus weeks because of recent cataract surgery and recovery, I opted out not to be a member because why pay for using a pool for only a third of the time that I could use it? As a property taxpayer and homeowner, I do not understand why the pool cannot be open to Green Hills residents after 5:00 p.m. on weekends and holidays, of course, with proof of residence required. I would like to have the pool rules revised to allow both members and village residents to be able to use the pool after 5:00 p.m. on weekends and holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We need somebody to do an executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session for purposes of discussing the sale or purchase of property.
Second.
Clerk called the council.
Mr. Holter.
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Hudson.
Aye.
Ms. Walther.
Aye.
Ms. Hermes.
Aye.
Ms. Osmonoglu.
Aye.
Do we want to go and give a five-minute break before we go in? Right, and there'll be no action, nothing, no action taken after we adjourn.